We'll call our August 4th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Elps.
Here.
Councilman Wommack.
Here.
Okay, at this time I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Jeremiah Tatum from Willow Avenue Church of Christ, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Will you bow with me, please? Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for a beautiful day you've given us in the summertime and time when school's starting again and our community's coming together. And we're thankful for this meeting, for everyone who's involved, and thankful for all the people that make our community what it is, from education to government to business to arts and humanities and everything else that we do together. Father, we pray that you always help us to be united in what we're trying to accomplish and that we'll glorify you. We ask that you'd bless this meeting tonight, especially those who are over it, that they'll make good decisions and that you'll give them wisdom. And Father, we pray for this election year in our country, that you'll watch us and be with us as we elect new rulers to help us to go forward in our world and we pray for peace and for the love that you've given to us and your son. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or corrections?
Mayor, I would ask that the council consider adding two items to the agenda. Item seven F would be considered resolution R-160812, authorizing the submittal of an EPA Brownfield area-wide planning grant. And item seven G, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the lease of the city's water slide with the Hendersonville Expo Center and Mr. Barry Lee.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted? Motion here.
Item four, appointments. Four A, consider appointment to the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority. Melinda Kiefer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we become very close to completing our Phase One of the Tennessee Heritage Rail Trail Project, I'd like to bring before you to reappoint Mr. Sam Salee. He has completed his first three-year term and has agreed to serve an additional term. And then to appoint Brad Sales. Dr. Scott Keith has served for the last few years and decided his plate was pretty full and Brad has graciously agreed to serve.
Thank you. Is there a motion on these two appointees?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted? Motion here.
Four B, recognize as world premiere of musical Fearless and honor the cast. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation I'd like to share with you and read just a moment, but before I do that, if I'd like to ask playwright Valerie Conley, Valerie, if you could just stand behind the podium there, I'd appreciate it. And Mayor has a presentation for you in just a few minutes. And the proclamation is this: Whereas the pursuit of excellence is universally admirable and respectable goal, and whereas the Cookeville community has been and continues to be the fortunate beneficiary of exceptionally high-quality theatrical and musical performances as exhibited by the Cookeville Children's Theater, the Cookeville High School Choral Group, the Tennessee Tech Players, the Brown Symphony Orchestra, and the Cookeville Community Band and others, and whereas the world premiere in Cookeville, Tennessee of the Golden Glove musical Fearless continues in the rich tradition and brings additional credibility to our community with regard to commitment to the performing arts. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Cookeville City Council, Mary Ricky Shelton, Vice Mayor Larry Elps, Councilman Jim Woodford, Dr. Charles Wommack, and Dwight Henry, that the local resident playwright Valerie Conley, artistic director Mark Creeter, music director Mindy Richards, as well as the entire cast, orchestra, and crew be highly commended and recognized for their tireless effort and energy and commitment in bringing this world premiere performance to our community. And as I mentioned in the proclamation, Valerie Conley is the playwright, also had the lead in the musical. Valerie, we're just so proud of what you've done here and no telling where Fearless will go from here, but we'll always be proud of the fact that it debuted, the world premiere was right here. And if you have a comment or two I'm sure to share, I'm sure that'd be very appropriate. Okay, Mayor?
Sure.
Well, thank you. As a musician all my life, as an interested theatrical thespian from the earliest days, and as an artist in many other realms as well, I moved to Cookeville because of the arts community here. And I wanted in 2009 to find a way to do some of these things which my busy life as an educator up in Illinois only allowed me to carry along on the side. And so as time moved forward, it became clear that the audiences I was playing to here and in Nashville wanted something more than what I was doing and they all... Dwight was one of these people. He said, "Why don't you just make a whole musical out of this?" You know, so I did. And it was a three-year project to bring Fearless to the stage. It's a great honor that you bestow upon it right now and I want you to know it was a gift, it is a gift, to Cookeville for having opened its arms and allowed this little musician and artist to thrive and enjoy such a wonderful community. What really surprised me and Hal was the way the business community stepped up and made it possible. They did. We had over 110 businesses sponsor this little play. So I'm thankful and grateful for all of that. WCTE says they will be broadcasting it sometime in October and we will have video available, of course, for everyone who wants to purchase one. And who knows where it'll go? We're not giving up yet. This is the beginning and thank you, Cookeville, for making it possible.
Would you like to introduce the cast members that are here?
Well, the cast members who are here, we have Angela Anderson. She played Maggie. She was my daughter. We have Austin Burchett. He played almost every role there was, most notably the pizza delivery guy. And we have Judy Sullivan, who played Allison, who was the late wife of the main character's male lead, Daniel, who didn't make it today, although he hoped to. And we have Ralph Bowden, who played George in the Job Ops Center. And down at the far end, we have, remind me?
Wade Story.
Wade Story. I was going to say that. I just wanted to be sure I had your name right, Wade. Wade is representing our musicians today and he played every minute of the rehearsals and the show. Tell them your instrument, Wade. I think it's guitar?
Electric guitar.
Electric guitar. So there you go. We had 21 instruments. No, we had 21 musicians and more instruments than that in the musical, which is the most that's ever been crammed into the C-Pak. So it was really fun and wonderful and I cannot thank you enough from the very deepest part of my heart for this honor for all of us. And I couldn't have done this myself. It's them who brought it to life. So, thank you.
Five A, old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on July 21st, 2016. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Is there a second? Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted?
Five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-160718 amending Title 19, Chapter 1, Section 19-123 of the Cookeville Municipal Code pursuant to application fees required for electric service. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, as we've discussed, this is mostly a housekeeping item to make our customer service policies match our municipal code section. And I've received no comments since first reading and request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move. Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Thank you.
Thank you. Five C, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-160616 amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 14, Chapters 5, 6, 7, and 8 relative to stormwater-related regulations. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, as you said, this just readops our existing stormwater erosion code ordinances and it also adds our stormwater design and erosion design guidelines into the ordinance. We've not received any comments or calls since the first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted? Motion here.
The consent agenda. Six A, consider awarding bids for luminaires, pole brackets, and transformers for the electric department. That will be low bidder meeting specs. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted? Motion here.
New business. Seven A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-160717, RAO redevelopment area overlay zoning for 127 and 135 North Franklin Avenue. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance would establish the city's fourth RAO redevelopment area overlay district. It's located on North Franklin. Here's a general location of the property. More detailed location of the two parcels involved in this request. This request was submitted by Chad Gilbert of Putnam County Contracting Services on behalf of property owner Tony Gammon. This is located at 127 and 135 North Franklin. These properties are located adjacent to an existing RAO district, which is the cottages, which is on Chestnut and West Broad Street, and that's depicted here. Of course, our provisions for RAO were established in 2013 as a mechanism for the redevelopment and revitalization, rehabilitation, and general improvement of areas identified in our 2030 plan as being in need of such action. And as I stated, this is the fourth such area. There's specific processes you have to follow to get approval for an RAO. There are incentives that can be provided to encourage people to develop as an RAO. These two properties are identified as Parcels 21 and 22 on Tax Map 53A, Group D, and combined they consist of 26,080 square feet. Here's an aerial view of the properties. Both tracts are within an area identified in our 2030 plan as being in need of redevelopment and revitalization. The underlying zoning of these two properties is RD, single-family and duplex residential. Under this classification, the parcels are limited to a maximum of one single-family dwelling or one duplex per parcel. The minimum lot area requirement in the RD district is 5,000 square feet. If this property were subdivided in a traditional subdivision, combined, the land area would allow approximately five dwelling units to be developed. The properties are currently used as a... One is a single-family residential structure and the other is a multifamily residential structure or triplex, which is depicted on the screen. The triplex is a legal non-conforming use, a use that existed prior to the establishment of zoning, which made it a non-conforming use. It's the backside of the triplex. And this is a single-family dwelling located on there. Mr. Gilbert has submitted a preliminary RAO concept plan, which is depicted on the screen. Along with the plan, he was required and has submitted a written statement, a site plan, floor plans, elevation plans, photos, and other materials which are specified in our zoning code. The application indicates that six single-family detached dwellings will be constructed if the RAO zoning request is approved. The request also indicates that if the RAO is established, all development would be completed within one year of date of approval. The floor plans indicate that this would consist of two-story dwellings with two bedrooms and two-bath configuration. The elevation plans indicate that the structure's exterior finishes would consist primarily of brick and hardy plank construction. Here's the rendering of how these structures would look. Sidewalks along Franklin Avenue would be installed. The off-street parking area would be provided to the rear. Let me go back to the... As you can see, this would be the parking area, so from the street you'd see the fronts of those buildings. This is the type of development that we're trying to encourage in our redevelopment areas. We think this would be a very attractive development here. Canopy trees would be planted along off-street frontages. As noted, in the RAO district, we can provide incentives, including density bonuses and setback reductions and so forth, to encourage people to go into these areas. And typically, we can allow up to 20 units per acre in terms of a bonus, which is about 2,178 square feet per dwelling unit. So on this side, if it was justified, we could allow up to 11 dwelling units. In this case, they're only asking for six dwelling units, which is just a little bit more than what they could currently do. So it's not a huge incentive to get this to happen in here. No other special considerations are requested. The Planning Commission is recommending for approval of the preliminary RAO concept plan and for the development of six detached dwelling units, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? Okay. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted? Motion here.
Seven B, consider authorizing the city manager to execute Tennessee Department of Transportation contract amendment number four to the Rails with Trails project in accompanying interlocal agreement regarding the use of the budgeted surface transportation funds from the city of Cookeville. Melinda Kiefer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What I have for you tonight is a contract amendment for the original rail trail construction project and the monies that we were awarded. What this amendment would do would allow for us, the city of Cookeville, to put our 2016 STP allocation onto that contract, and it would amend the budget thereof. This will secure that allocation. We have to have it under contract and basically obligated by September 30th. And at such time, should we choose and do not need to spend those monies on the trail project, we will be able to transfer those funds to another project that we might deem in the future with our other STP money that will be having, will be have, coming in the future. So along with that contract amendment is also an interlocal agreement. Because the trail is a joint partnership between the three governments, contract amendments require approval for all three governments. But the interlocal agreement will basically state and authorize each city manager and county executive to sign to give us that money back should we decide we want to put it on another project in the future. We have that Great Transportation Planning Grant coming. We have about $1.7 million and a five-year allocation of STP money. And so it will give us time to sit down, be very strategic, possibly look at the outcomes of that planning grant, and then make a determination where that money will be best spent on our transportation needs. And I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion?
Melinda, this ability to transfer monies from one project to another, has that been in existence a long time? Is that a fairly new thing? Has that happened?
You can do that, especially with these. This is federal money that comes down through our State Department of Transportation. It kind of restricted in the use. It has to be transportation-related. It must be used on something above a minor arterial collector. It can be used on transportation alternatives like the trail. And it is fairly common for you to be able to obligate and de-obligate. If you'll recall, about this time last year, we obligated and de-obligated the same type funds from the Bennett Road project. And so you're able to kind of move those, use them as you need it. Now, they do have a time limit, so they sunset. If you don't spend them or have them under contract, then you do lose them. So this is fairly customary.
If we decided to, say, extend the rail trail toward Can Creek Park, for example, would that be very complicated for us to use this money for that if we, as a city, decided that and talked with our other partners?
Exactly. It'd be very simple to do that. So this allows us also time to make some decisions about what direction and how we want to move forward with the next phases of the trail. We still have some HPP money available there for design and potential right-of-way acquisition on the trail. So in short, this is going to give us time to be a little more strategic, give a little more thought to what our next steps are going to be on several of our transportation projects because it'll be safe and secure under this contract.
Any other discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted?
Seven C, consider authorizing the city manager entering an agreement with the city of Allgood for routine maintenance on traffic control devices. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this is, I think, the fourth agreement that I'm asking you to consider. You've already considered this exact same agreement for Monterey, Livingston, and Sparta and Baxter. So this will be the fifth one, I guess. It's the same exact agreement. We would, if we have the time and when we're requested by these other cities, to provide assistance with their traffic control devices. And in the agreement, the city of Allgood would indemnify the city of Cookeville should any claims arise out of the... Any issues that might pop up, hopefully that never occurs, but it would authorize us to be able to do that work. It's the exact same agreement you passed for these other cities and I would ask you to consider adopting this one as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Anyone like to speak to the motion? All vote?
Have yeas voted? Motion here.
Seven D, consider approval of lease agreement for five 2015 motorcycles for the police department presented by newly awarded Middle Tennessee Police Chief of the Year Randy Evans. Congratulations, sir. He thought he would get by without somebody saying that.
One good hope.
Not a chance. Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, this lease agreement is with Boswell Harley-Davidson. Essentially, this lease just extends our current lease for a period of one year. The only change is instead of six motorcycles, it will be down to five. Our intent is next year is to either rebid or explore the feasibility of purchasing motorcycles. So we're still kind of doing the math and the study on that. The lease payment for the year for five motorcycles, $16,997.40, and it is a budgeted item and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted? Motion here.
Also, seven E, consider awarding bids for seven police pursuit vehicles.
Mayor and council, we solicited bids for police pursuit vehicles. We only received one bid from Casey's Frontier and it was for a 2017 Chevy Tahoe. I'm going to recommend that we actually go with a statewide contract and those are for three Ford utility interceptor SUVs and then four sedan, Ford sedan interceptors. Of course, cost, you see up there, is $27,239 for a total of $82,017 for the SUVs. Price on the Ford sedans, $25,428. Total cost of $1,1,712. Those items are budgeted and I'd recommend your approval. Statewide contract is with Ford of Murkensville.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Have yeas voted?
Thank you, Middle Tennessee Police Chief of the Year Randy Evans. Seven F, consider resolution R-160812 authorizing the submittal of EPA Brownfield area-wide planning grant application for the West Cookeville revitalization area. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you stated, Mayor, this grant application intended to apply for a grant from the EPA for an area we've identified as the West Cookeville revitalization area. That area is depicted on the screen. It consists of approximately 86 acres and extends from Oak Avenue West between Spring and Broad Streets to the western intersection, then along Broad Street to and including Bob's Auto Salvage property. The Auto Salvage property is the catalyst or priority Brownfield site for this project area. This grant's intended to address Brownfield areas and the surrounding area for the purpose of developing plans for the reuse of that property and for the revitalization of the areas in the surrounding area. This area actually includes some other sites that may potentially qualify or would serve, we hope, as an incentive to get this grant approved. That would include a scrap metal area and it also includes the builder's supply property. The maximum grant amount is $200,000. No matching funds are required. Applications must be submitted by August 10th and it's anticipated, and that's a very short time for us to get all this together, and the development district will be assisting us in preparing the application. It's anticipated that successful proposals will be announced in January and then the projects would be initiated in March. And the planning department recommends for approval of the resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for these grant monies.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion?
I just think this is wise of us to go after this and then identify this, even though Bob Hill salvage charge is the catalyst for this, just us being aware that revitalization in this area in Brownfield will probably be applied for at some point in the future. But it will be public meetings, kind of like what Habitat did in their neighborhood, so there will be input on this in the future. But us being proactive on this is very key to this.
That's a key component, is community involvement. And we're reaching out to various community groups now that we have to get commitments from to include in this. But you exactly, that was a great analogy of what this process will be. It's community citizen-driven. There will be many public hearings, planning charrettes to come up with an overall vision for this area, if it is approved.
James, what was the date you said we'd know if we received this grant or not?
Expected to announce in January of 2017, so four, five months, six months.
Any other comments? All vote?
Have yeas voted?
Seven G, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for lease of the city's water slide with the Hendersonville Expo Center, Mr. Barry Lee. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, back in December, we purchased the 1,000-foot water slide. Had a wonderful event over the Fourth of July holiday with the slide, shows and performances in Dogwood Park, fireworks, all the activities at the fairgrounds. But during the slide event, Mr. Barry Lee with Hendersonville Expo Center was apparently here observing our slide event, watching. He reached out to the mayor a few days ago and inquired if the city would consider leasing or renting the use of that slide to the Hendersonville Expo. So we have spoken with Mr. Lee after talking with Rick Woods and the city attorney, looking at, should we consider this? Would we consider this? Came up with a number of provisions that we would require of Mr. Lee and the Expo Center to try and protect the city from any and all risks that we could think of, protect the slide and the investment we've made in the slide. And in your package is a list of those items that we had shared with Mr. Lee. He's reviewing those. He would like to be able to continue this dialogue and discussion. And what I'm asking you to do is allow me to try and negotiate a lease agreement with Mr. Lee and the Hendersonville Expo Center for a fee of $12,000, not to, not any less than $12,500 for the use of that slide for that three-day event, along with the other provisions that I've shared with you in that packet. And allow me to try to negotiate that with Mr. Lee and if it works out, to execute that agreement. And if it doesn't, then so be it. But it would potentially recover $12,500 of that investment we've made in the slide. Right now, sitting in a trailer over at the storage lot and I would ask you to consider this item.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion of second. Any discussion?
And the money for that, the $12,500 we were able to negotiate goes, of course, as you pointed out, back into the Quality of Life Fund, which means we're going to creep a good deal of our initial expenditures. And some of our staff, one of the things I think you said you're going to propose, that our staff will actually be there as they load it and unload it and be able to inspect it even after it's used to make sure that we don't have any problems next Fourth of July when we want to use it. Is all of it a part of the negotiation process?
That is. Those are the things we've outlined with Mr. Lee. We would want our staff there to oversee the setup of it and then before it's taken down, we'd be there to inspect it while it's inflated, to make sure it is clean and in good repair before it goes back on the trailer and that it's put back on that trailer the way it, in our order, the way we want it put on there because that makes all the difference is when you unload it for our event next Fourth of July. So, but that is part of the agreement as well, yes.
I like it because it's paying back to the Quality of Life Fund. As long as the city's protected on this and, you know, the funds will come directly back to the city to the Quality of Life Fund, that's a positive in that aspect alone.
Well, it makes the event pay back, makes the, as we agreed when we bought it, for the event to pay back to the Quality of Life Fund, this speeds that up by at least one year. So it actually extends the use of our slide a longer period of time, being able to pay it off quicker because, so that's a good thing. It's a win-win. Any other comments? All vote?
Have yeas voted?
Thank you. That concludes the agenda portion of our meeting. Anyone, citizens, like to speak to the council about any matter? Council, anyone have anything?
With your permission...
With your permission, I hope this is the appropriate time. The... We continue in our envision Cookeville process as it goes on. And the next step, and I personally want to thank the 80 or so people who gathered here a few months ago and spent most of the Saturday with us, looking at five different areas of the city, where we asked the question, where are we? Where do we want to go? And how do we want to get there? Very helpful. We've come back with some priorities. In addition to those 80 or so folks, had about 900 people respond online, so it's been very helpful in terms of getting input as far as the future of our city is concerned. An important next step will happen, where, James, in just a few days, a week or so, when a random survey will go out to a number of utility users, what, four or 500 of them?
It's likely 500, and it'll actually be mailed out tomorrow.
Yeah. And so I just want to... In the room, if you receive one of those, or those of those users, or those customers who receive that, please strongly consider completing that, getting it back to us. It will help us fine-tune that process. It'll get more, a little bit more specific. It may even ask questions about, we have learned that these are priorities already, to the extent that this is a priority. For example, curbside recycling, you know, if we go forward with that, are you willing to pay for that? Now, all of these priorities will not involve, you know, public monies. It'll be a partnership between city, maybe county, private sector, nonprofit organizations. But the real point that I want to make is, to the extent that those people receive those surveys, those 500 people, please, please get those back to us, because your voice matters, it counts, and it helps us to go forward in a very positive way with this envision Cookeville process, which we're all very appreciative of and proud of so far to this point. Appreciate your work in making that happen, James, yours and your department's.
It's been a lot of big help for us today, 500 envelopes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, this is on a personal note. Yesterday, my daughter and son-in-law have added to the population to the city of Cookeville and birthed my grandson Emmett James. Eight pounds, eight ounces.
Yes, sir.
The mountain bike trail at Canyon Creek Park, I've been told by Rick, is ready for a grand opening. We've got our signs and...
Almost.
Almost?
That's the only thing we're waiting for.
Okay, soon as we have the signs, we're going to have a grand opening. And as we all saw in the paper, are winning a $400,000 matching grant to build a skateboard park at Parkview. So we're doing well as far as new projects and everything, so I'm very happy to see both of these coming along.
Quality of life in Cookeville's definitely on the upswing.
Mayor, do you have anything?
Nah.
Okay. Just want to say, thank Tracy Hackett from the Herald. My understanding is we've been a reassignment, and that she won't be covering our meetings anymore, and we certainly appreciate your very diligent and respectful and great coverage that you've given us. And I'm sure the next person will carry on in your footsteps, but we just want to say thank you for what you've done for our city. We will be adjourned.